Yes, Mike Saron.
Mike Saron.
Are you ready?
Yes.
All righty, welcome everyone to the Planning Commission meeting of June 5, 2023. Can we start with the Pledge of Allegiance? Oh, roll call, sorry, that's first.
Commissioner Chan?
Present.
Commissioner Quigg? Vice Chair Wong?
Present.
Chair Davis?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Del Negro is excused.
Okay, now we can do the Pledge of Allegiance. All righty, next up is Agenda Review. Does anybody have anything they want to move? Question? We're good? Okay. We have one set of minutes to approve from... There it is. May 15. Any corrections? Or motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Can we vote?
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg? Vice Chair Wong?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0 with Commissioner Quigg abstaining and Commissioner Del Negro excused.
Thank you. Now it's time for public communication as the time set aside for the public to address the Planning Commission on topics that are in our purview but not on tonight's agenda. Do we have any speaker slips in person and any hands raised online?
I do not.
You do not? Okay, then we'll move on from that. Next on is a public hearing. Capital Improvement Program General Plan Conformance Review. It's a review of the Capital Improvement Program and Fiscal Year Budget for 2023-24 and its conformance with the Millbrae General Plan pursuant to California Government Code Section 65401. Oscar, we have a staff report?
Yes, yes, we do. This evening, I'd like to present, like to introduce Jennifer Lim, our Assistant Planner. This is our first planning commission meeting to introduce and present this project.
Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Davis and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Jennifer Lim, Assistant Planner with the Community Development Department. And tonight, I will be joined with Armando Mora, Senior Civil Engineer, to present the review of the Capital Improvement Program and Fiscal Year 2023-24 Capital Improvement Program Budget Conformance with the City of Millbrae's General Plan. Tonight's action is for Planning Commission's review of the CIP and budget, consider the public testimony and the materials presented in this report, and consider adopting the attached resolution confirming review of the Capital Improvement Program and Fiscal Year 2023-24 Capital Improvement Program Budget and its conformance with the Millbrae General Plan pursuant to Government Code Section 65401. It is the Planning Commission's responsibility to ensure the adopted city plans are consistent with the adopted general plan. Pursuant to Government Code Section 65401, staff should review and receive a program of proposed public works to ensure, for the ensuing fiscal year, to ensure conformity with the general plan. Planning Commission's review includes only proposed public works projects recommended for planning, initiation, or construction during the ensuing fiscal year, that is between July 1, 2023 and June 30, 2024. Planning Commission's review and determination of consistency is needed prior to the City Council's action on the proposed fiscal year 2023-24 CIP budget, which will be considered for adoption by the City Council at our later date in June. Each of the new or revised projects have been reviewed for consistency with the general plan. Staff has reviewed and found the CIP and budget to be consistent with the general plan. The staff report includes general plan policies and goals which the CIP projects are consistent with. These are additional general plan policies that the CIP projects are consistent with. The Park Fund Capital Improvement Projects such as the Bayside Manor and Marina Vista Park Renovations meet Land Use Policy 12.2 Equity in Capital Projects. The Aviador Water Main Replacement Project is consistent with Natural Resource Conservation Policy 2.4 General Infrastructure. The EV Charger CIP Project is consistent with Natural Resource Conservation Policy 7.2 City Vehicle Replacement, in which the city shall purchase zero emission vehicles. Next, I will hand it over to Armando Mora to go into more detail on the CIP projects.
Good evening, Chair Davis and Planning Commission. In the Capital Improvement Program, there are several types of projects. The first type of project is improvements to the city facilities. The second is improvements to the recreation and park facilities. The third, projects that improve the sanitary sewer collection system and the water pollution control plant. Other projects, projects that improve water infrastructure, stormwater and storm drain facilities, transportation, and street improvements. One category are the park improvements. Listed above are four projects that are slated to be either in design or in construction in the upcoming fiscal year. First is the Central Park and Green Hills Pathway Repairs. The Mills Estate Park Reactivation, which is more of a study and planning with some preliminary design. The Bayside Manor Park and the Marina Vista Park. Included in the slide are two concept plans that have been prepared and are planned to be in design and construction started the next fiscal year. And the next type of projects are the projects for the sewer collection and the water pollution control plant. First is the Sewer Lateral Main Replacement, an annual program to repair or replace sewer mains and laterals based on inspection data. The Madron Forest Main, preliminary design and permitting. The Lower Hillcrest Sub Basin 4, construction to replace the existing and aging sewers within this basin. Sewer Collection System Improvements, this is system replacement of sewer mains at various locations. The Aviador and East Mill Avenue Capacity Upgrade to replace existing sewers to a larger size in the Aviador and Millray Avenue and Adrian Road. The Broadway Sub Basins 4 Sanitary Sewer Replacement. The CoGen System Replacement. The Near Shore Outfall. The Sludge Thicker and Digestor Number Two Rehab at the Control Plant. Projects for Water Infrastructure are Water Main Replacement Projects. These are three sub projects that are slated to be in construction next year. One is the Downtown Broadway Side Streets. Awani Drive, the Vista Grande near Royal Seco. The next project is the 2023 Annual Main Replacement at Hermosa Avenue, Silva Avenue, Mateo Avenue, Monterey Street, Madron Street, and Bay Street. The third is the Aviador Avenue Water Main Replacement. This is primarily designed for the replacement and upsizing of the water main in this area. And then the Helen Drive Area Water Main Replacement Design as well. The next type is the Stormwater and Storm Drain Facility Improvements. Two projects under this are the Royal Seco and Vista Grande Storm Drain Bypass and the Tioga, Helen, Geraldine Storm Drain Improvement. This is just a design. Transportation Projects, the Sidewalk Maintenance Program, the Annual Payment Maintenance Program, the Slurry Seal, then the Annual Street Repair Programs rehabilitate cities' aging roads, which include Palm Avenue, Hazel Avenue, Laurel Avenue, Ashton Avenue, El Paso and Almenar Street. Transportation Circulation Improvements. The Millbrae Bridge Bike Way, the Traffic Calming Program. This will go into construction. We've got the project which will address traffic calming on Park Boulevard, Omita Way, Santa Teresa Way, and San Juan Avenue and San Andresmo Avenue. Another project is the El Camino Real Millbrae Avenue Landscape Midian. This is primarily a planning and design, parking meter implementation, and the Millbrae Transit Micro Mobility Hub Pilot. I now turn it, I now turn over to Jennifer.
Staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the CIP and budget, consider the public testimony and the materials presented in this report, and consider adopting the attached resolution confirming review of the Capital Improvement Program and Fiscal Year 2023-24 Capital Improvement Program Budget and its conformance with the Millbrae General Plan pursuant to Government Code Section 65401. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any clarifying questions for the staff right now? Nathan?
Yeah, I had a question about the parking meter implementation. Do you know exactly where the parking meters are being studied to be placed right now?
Primarily in the commercial district along Broadway up to, I think, between, I want to say Taylor and Victoria, but I'm not really certain myself. I can give back to you on the actual limits.
And then in terms of the number of parking meters, are we, is it going to be, are we planning for the number of parking spaces that are there today? Or are we planning for when the downtown area turns to parallel parking and there'll be fewer parking spaces?
At this point, we don't know. It's still being studied. Alternatives have been prepared yet.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
So going along with the parking issue, has there been any discussions or plans or thought on how to improve parking? Is there going to be parking structures? Any thoughts or long-term plans about parking structures for downtown?
There may be, there may be some recommendation, primarily be conceptual.
So that would be in the, so for this CIP approval plan, this is for the next fiscal year?
Yes.
So those other plans, for example, for parking structure, maybe we're not looking at that now, is that a longer term plan?
That would be a much longer term plan, yes.
What about for planning monies or seed monies to look at the planning and design or pre-design for some of these long-term projects? Are we slating money in the CIP or planning and?
Not for the next year. We were just looking at a one-year CIP based on the current business conditions. Probably in the next following year, it'll probably look a little longer, probably with like a five-year horizon instead of just a one year. Parking implementation, it just focused primarily on some type of parking meters, kiosks, the limits, and also the impact, how many parking spaces are available within the district as well as adjoining properties. And of course, the parking lots are being studied right now. We have not received the preliminary report. That was recently awarded to a consulting firm about a month ago.
Okay, that's great to hear, making progress on long-term planning.
Thank you.
Well, is there anything else on parking? No, I mean, just, just clarifying questions. Okay. Let's see. My questions have to do a little bit more with the additional types of projects like for the, I saw that there's a East Hillcrest Avenue project. Can you talk or explain a little bit about how that project may help with the past flooding in that area? Is that going to address that issue that we've had before in that area?
Which project are you referring to?
For the Hillcrest east of El Camino. Are there projects, sewer projects, looking at how to relieve the prior flooding, you know, the unfortunate death or flooding on the Hillcrest Avenue east of El Camino?
There is a study that was already initiated this fiscal year, and I believe it's been completed. We have not seen, we've seen the final report. So there are no, there are no projects right now planned for next fiscal year that address storm issues east of Camino Real. But there has been, actually, I think, two studies that have, that are, I believe, completed but not finalized.
So I saw in the description there, there was a project for Lower Hillcrest. So that Lower Hillcrest project, does that cover the, you're saying it doesn't cover the east of El Camino, it's on the?
West side.
West side?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Also, there were a lot of, from the housing element, there was identified a lot of additional types of projects. Maybe it's not included in next year's plan, or maybe it's too close to that. But there was, for example, a lot of talk about having connectors or bike connection paths on the east side of El Camino that would create a continuous, like, walking path or loop from the Bard Station over to the school on the east side. Is that part of the next year's project, or is that further down the road, some of these projects?
Further down the road.
Okay. Can you, also, can you talk a little bit about the budget? How are we doing on budget and capital expenditures? All these, I assume, these CIP programs, are they all funded by bond monies? And is there budgets? How are we doing on the budget? Are we over or under past year's budget? How are we doing on spending and ability to?
Before you answer that, that's not in our purview. We are only to decide if this matches up with the general plan. We're not the council. We don't have any budgetary responsibilities or oversight. So I don't know that we even need to get an answer on that. I mean, if you have a quick answer, that's fine, but that's not our purview. Not our job.
A quick answer if I just focus on the CIP?
Okay.
And not really focus on preceding years. Currently, all these projects here are funded either through enterprise funds, for example, the sewer. It's, city has allocated $15 million towards sewer projects and plant projects, another $10 million, maybe a little higher, $12 million towards water projects, 2.8 to street projects, about two and a half towards park projects. Sewer and the water are paid through enterprise funds, through customer fees and things like that. The street is a variation of different measures, Measure M, gas tax, some grant money, and for the parks, there's some impact money as well as general fund money. Everything that you see in this program is all, it's all funded, it's all funded. No, there's.
Okay, appreciate that response. I know in the past, they've showed the cost for these projects, but they didn't include that this time. Also, there was previous talk about a connector for the water enterprise, that it would be an agreement with City of Hillsborough, City of Burlingame, to modify our water system so that it would pump up to our tank near skyline and then also connect to their water system. Is there progress being made on that? Is that something that's been talked about still or included or being planned?
Not presently. Also, if, the numbers associated with the projects are in the City Council report at the last previous, if you wanted to see what they all cost.
Any other questions? Okay.
Up above. This is still working. So, you know, I'm just kind of seeing this, and it says, "Review of a Capital Improvement Project and the Fiscal Year Budget." But we're not reviewing the budget at all, right?
Correct. That's correct. You're not reviewing the budget.
Even though it says that this, we're reviewing it. We're not.
You don't approve the budget. This is just the conformance of the Capital Improvement Programs that are tangentially related, but not directly.
The resolution doesn't include the word budget, so it does not.
Oh, good.
Well, it does kind of, it does, but, but it's, it's just part of the title of the, of it, right? It's not.
I just looked at it and I'm like, okay.
Right.
And it's not our responsibility to really review the budget, but since we're reviewing the two, it was just kind of.
I'm not sure it's two. That may be one giant title, Capital Improvement Program and Fiscal Year Budget four. Is that all one entity?
Because we don't get that.
Yeah.
Right, yes, that's correct.
Just like one giant title. Yeah, it's for that 2023-24 budget.
Correct.
Okay. Good. All righty, then, because we should open up public comment. Any speaker slips? Anybody online?
I do not have any speakers.
We lost one of our, we had two, now we only have one attendee.
Mike.
And it's you.
Mike, Mike went into pen and list.
All righty, so.
No, no speaker slips.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to close the public comment? What about Mike? He doesn't have a comment. Oh, he's just an attendee. I make a motion. Can we close the public comment? Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Vote?
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wong?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0. Public comments now closed.
Thank you. All right, discussion or motions? Anybody want to kick it off? Nathan?
I just wanted to add some comments about two of the, the street-specific projects. First, a sidewalk maintenance program. I wanted to sort of talk about my own experience with this. So in February, I was out for a run in the, in the city, and I unfortunately tripped on a sidewalk and scraped my hands and knees up pretty badly. But the city had launched the See Click Fix app, and I took a photo of the sidewalk. I made a, put a request on the app. The city did a temporary mitigation within 24 hours and notified the owner of the sidewalk that they needed to remediate it. And about two months later, the ticket was closed. Then the city said that the owner had taken care of it, and I was able to verify that it had been fixed. So, you know, people won't, I will hopefully be the last person to trip on that sidewalk, that section of sidewalk. So I just want to give credit to the city for following through on this program. I think it, I think it is very beneficial, and it does depend on all of us to report these issues using the city setup infrastructure to ensure that those issues are taken care of. I also want to really emphasize my support for the Millbrae Avenue Bridge Bicycle Path. I just got an email from a community member saying that, you know, the crossing over 101 on Millbrae Avenue is the most, is, he feels, the most dangerous bicycle path in the whole city, and he feels very uncomfortable taking his. And he feels very uncomfortable taking his family across. And he wants to take them across because New England lobster is right over there. So I think this project can happen soon enough. I hope we continue to fund it at the necessary levels to make sure that it actually gets built in a feasible amount of time. But I'm really happy to see this on here and want to, hopefully, we'll want to keep seeing it come before us as we move this project along. So those are my only comments, but I wanted to just emphasize my, what I like about those two.
Thank you. Anything else?
Just a few comments there. It's good, I think if there's a long-range plan, it's good to see the document, how this fits into that longer-term plan. For example, you know, sometimes there's improvements to a street, and if there's sewer and water and storm and sidewalk, it's always good to be coordinated so that, you know, if there's long-term plans, like a five-year plan, to look at different utilities in a street, that we make those improvements at the same time rather than going back several times. Also, I like the monies made not only to parks landscaping. For example, the Median on El Camino, that would be a big improvement. All for having additional monies or looking at how we can improve downtown. So for example, if there's an Economic Advisory Committee, if they have any plans or proposals or improvements so that we can beautify our downtown. Like I mentioned, night trees on the Median of El Camino Real, some of them look really bad shape, so whatever we can do to restore those. And then also looking at entrances to our city, such as a skyline and, and near the freeways, welcome signs that we should keep those up. Some of those may be maintenance, might not be included in the capital program, but always get to think about how we can make those improvements. And then also, there's the, you know, the whole Grand Boulevard, El Camino plans. So tying in and looking at how these fit into those longer-term plans. Like if we make an improvement on the Median for El Camino, but then we come back because we're doing the Grand Boulevard Plan for El Camino Real, is that going to be all ripped up soon? Or can we modify it so that it preps and paves the way for future improvements? So I'm just thinking about, you know, we do have approving this one-year plan, but it's good to see the big picture also. And I think for the city and the residents, it's good to show them that, you know, this all fits into a longer-term plan and it's coordinated, and we're not going to keep going back again and again to make improvements. So those are just some comments.
Thank you. Kathy, anything?
Once again, every year goes by, and we want their approval on it. Are there any conditions that I should be including in here?
It's just the only important words are confirming review.
Yes.
Okay.
Let me just clarify that the Capital Improvement Program for the next fiscal year 2024 is consistent with the general plan.
In the Resolution Number 2305.
Yeah, I think I should have done this instead of looking at that. But the Resolution, the Planning Commission, the City of Millbrae confirming review of the Capital Improvement Program and fiscal year budget for 23-24 and its conformance with the Millbrae General Plan pursuant to California Government Code Section 65401.
Lovely. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Helen. Can we vote?
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wong?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. All righty, new business? See none? Staff updates?
Yeah, so next Planning Commission meeting will be a special meeting on June 21st. It'll be on a Wednesday. And at that meeting, we will have the rotation of the chair as well. And that's all the updates I have this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements? All our summer funds coming up. Isn't there, there's movies in the park and beats and brews in June?
I guess they're going to be celebrating something, June 18th on the seventeenth.
Juneteenth is another, we've got a lot of fun stuff.
There's a lot of stuff.
Coming up. Yeah.
Lions Club is having their installation at the end of the month.
All right. Car show will come up soon enough in August.
Oh, my gosh. I'm telling you, when I saw this was on the agenda tonight, I thought, oh, my God, didn't we just do this? I guess it must have been a year.
Yeah, quite.
All righty, if we're all done, then we're earned.
That's it.
That's it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.